Hello.
Yeah, I don't know what you're doing.
Greg is like, we're going too close to the ocean. She's in the other table.
One of the first person to work.
It says we have fifteen minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I said, I'm tired.
Yeah, don't worry about me. I'm done.
Anybody got a presentation tomorrow?
Um, I think there's one.
No, it's not.
For this, oh, presentation like that, yeah. He said he set everything up though. He got it ready. Yeah.
He's working on a double wide.
Okay, so we're live?
I mean, I didn't want to record it yet, but yeah.
Oh, yeah, I traded it down.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. All day.
Well, livable.
Thank you.
It's livable.
Okay, good. I'll see you. I'll do it. Thank you.
If the floor is good and the roof and the walls are good, it's just, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, it's a three bedroom. A vaulted ceiling. Um, no, it's not as big as Apple, but it's bigger, bigger than what he's got down here. Well, the one up there is huge. It's modular.
Check, 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 check.
Yeah, this one, I think, is twenty-eight wide by sixty.
Check, 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 check.
I know. Yeah.
It's my wedding anniversary. So I actually worked my wedding anniversary and then my husband and I.
Yeah, so then.
I was at Studio. Yeah, what was that? Oh, wasn't, was that part of the event?
No, but the patio bars and we could.
Oh, okay. Yeah. You know, have you ever been to that little place that's tucked away over by Island Water? It's where they say that.
That's a food, I love that food.
Yeah, so we went there for dinner.
Find the entrance by yourself.
No. Oh, wow. Yeah. Around what time is that?
About four o'clock.
Okay. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Ma'am? That's Mr. Power.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I like to go to your line. I can have some.
She has lots of music.
Wow.
No, I am not here for an hour already. I'm walking away without.
I like to go window. And then if I still want it the next day, then maybe I'll come back.
Oh, we're monitoring everything. We have our time here.
Oh, that's good. I like that. Y'all start with the case of ours.
I'm gonna tell you, um, I got it now.
Hi, James.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you.
I know who that is.
Honor.
That is a very nice little question. I love things, boy. Wonderful.
Sorry, meeting is very busy. For next week, then I have some other meeting and stuff. Gonna set up wherever you'd rather. I think that's the change we're going.
Oh, yeah.
It has to be, we need our.
Right around the corner. I think, play time is gonna stand. They go, yeah. Never come back.
It's good.
Still alive.
Oh, right.
Now, let's.
Questioned by social.
I remember this school.
The star is born.
Oh, so she went. Yeah, I remember he had a house for fifty dollars. Five feet just for fifty dollars. It's good that they're like this.
It's nice. Yes.
Rebecca, Rebecca.
Might be able to. They're like this hard.
Yeah.
This is the issue. So, only for driver. So, this is. So, those are the drivers. At least, we're gonna have to have it. So, we don't have to split it.
Well, we account. Usually get one from Florida down by the sea. Somebody's like, he's. When you do drive it, how to get it.
Oh.
I mean, I don't.
It's good if you do my life. Stingers.
Time to get out the holidays.
Hey, Cookie. Oh, go get him, girl.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could please call to order our regular city commission meeting for December fourth, two thousand eighteen at seven o'clock. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Battle.
Here.
Mayor Gans.
Here. Can everyone please rise for a moment of silence? We'd like to honor tonight our former president, George H.W. Bush, as well as Brian, Father Brian Dalton from Saint Ambrose Church who passed away over the weekend.
Mother Angel. The pleasure of allegiance, sacred flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have approval of the city commission meeting minutes, the regular city commission meeting minutes for October second, two thousand eighteen, October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes so spoken.
We have a motion, a second, from Vice Mayor Battle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Acknowledgement of city board minutes for the code compliance meeting minutes for July tenth, two thousand eighteen, the August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting, and the August twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting, the community parents board meeting minutes for October tenth, two thousand eighteen, the community redevelopment agency meeting minutes for August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, August twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, our education advisory board meeting minutes for August first, two thousand eighteen, into September fifth, two thousand eighteen, the non-uniform pension board meeting minutes for May seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, the planning and zoning board meeting minutes for September sixth, two thousand eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge all those minutes you just spoke of.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, our approval of our city commission meeting agenda for December fourth, two thousand eighteen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the addition to A-one and A-two.
And A-three.
And A-three.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Well, we have our very first one that we have here tonight. Is there a certificate of recognition presented to students on receiving a perfect score in specific subjects on the Florida standards assessment and/or the end of course assessment? We have a long list right here, but as one of our actions here in the city of Deerfield Beach that we wanted to do is to acknowledge our star students here in the city. We felt it was important that we do that, so we're glad they are here tonight to join in with this. These students have received either perfect scores in specific subjects in the Florida standards assessment and the end of course assessments. The assessment system measures students' achievements of Florida's education standards, which were developed and implemented to ensure that all students graduate from high school ready to have success in college, career, and in life. Please join us in recognizing these students who accomplished something pretty extraordinary and have made us all very, very proud. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna list all the names. We're gonna have them all joined over here at the end, and then we can do a picture with the commission, if that's all right. Junior Charette. Diane Pierre. Tyrus McNeil. Krista Lee Anir. Sarah Gonzalez. Ulayne Hun. Kaylee Nasir. Brianna Bernudin. Ernest Cook. Sharif DeGrassien Moran. Nahim Islam. Emily Kurian. Skayel La Rochelle. Kristen Mohammed. Ruyer Rocha. And Duncan Zee. Mission, can you join us down here, please?
I'm gonna go with the, by the short kids. I'm in the middle, so. Short.
Remember I got my lunchbox?
Get one more.
Well, I'm coming.
It's like, keep the pomegranate.
Are you ready?
What?
Thanks, Bernie.
Are you ready?
Congratulations.
So next we have a special item. Someone who's very special here in the city, our very own superhero that we have that walks among us. Some people know him as Ricky the Recycling Ranger, but most of us know his true identity. Am I allowed to say it? Is it all right? I'm not gonna ruin it, am I? It's kinda like telling everybody that Clark Kent is really Superman, but the Heavenly Saint Bien, Ricky the Recycling Ranger. So the secret is out, that Ricky the Recycling Ranger is portrayed by eight-year-old the Heavenly Saint Bien. We're proud to tell you that Heavenly is a Deerfield Beach resident. He's discovered at one of our summer camps here in the city of Deerfield Beach and currently attends the Highlands Aftercare Program. The city is very, very grateful to his parents, Jasmine and DeeDee Saint Bien, for who made their son available for us for multiple video and photo shoots, volunteering their time as the city helps roll out our new recycling program. Waste Management has declared Deerfield Beach Educational Campaign is one of the most aggressive recycling initiatives they've seen in South Florida, and to date Ricky Ranger videos have received more than twenty thousand views across our city's social media platforms. Ricky the Recycling Ranger's tips are also being viewed and taught in our local schools and the city's aftercare programs, and in appreciation, we have something here for you, which reads, "With our greatest appreciation, we hereby present to Heavenly Saint Bien, also known as Ricky the Recycling Ranger, with this award in recognition of your commitment to help the city of Deerfield Beach educate residents on the importance of recycling. Thank you so much."
Oh, thank you.
Your parents, will you get it? Yeah, somebody take, take, do your phone to Rebecca, she can take a picture.
Oh.
Aw, he's sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for lending us your.
Yes, sir. The Heavenly? Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have our quasi judicial public hearings.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
You step forward and indicate whether you wish to waive the strict quasi judicial proceedings, which would provide for cross-examination and a lot of formalities, and just be able to present your case in the way most people do.
Yes.
State your name, please.
Denise Williams with Art Sign Company.
And are you waiving the quasi judicial?
Yes.
Okay, and a reminder, this is a fourth, fifth vote item.
Listen, we have your name and address for the record again?
Denise Williams, Art Sign Company, eight-three-five Northwest Sixth Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-one-one.
Thank you. Mr. Power, are you gonna be presenting anything, or? The applicant liked to speak first.
Do you have anything to present?
Well, I mean, I can explain what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am, if you could.
We were approved to do the sign. We already have a permit for Two Georges Cove Restaurant, but the "at thee" in the center is not there at this present time. We wanna add "at thee" to restore it back to its original name, and to do that, it takes three lines of copy to fit into the design of the sign, and so we're here to ask for, you know, the, to allow three lines of copy where the code usually allows for two, and this has already been approved by the P and Z. They, they're fine with it, so they're sending me here to get your approval, and I can answer any questions, but it's not increasing the square feet that the sign isn't currently, it's just restoring their name back to their original name.
Okay. Any commission comments before I open it to the public?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I like it very much. I, it draws in the past, the history, Cove Restaurant, and the new name, and I know it's three lines, but that middle line is almost nothing, so I'm gonna be voting in affirmative on this one.
Thank you. Commissioner Drosky?
What's the hardship? Sign, sign variance requires a hardship. What's?
Well, our.
With hardship in your words.
Our hardship basically was just the sidelines from where most of the traffic's visible there from the bridge, the location of the sign, the letters they, right now, are about what you need them to be to see them from the traffic area. So, we didn't wanna put "at thee" so big, so, because that's not, really not necessary to see the Two Georges, but they do wanna restore their name to the, the original name, so we wanna add that back, but, like I said, the sign itself, as far as the height requirements and everything, we, we're in square feet, we're okay as far as regular code, and we're not increasing that, it's just to add the extra copy to restore their name to what they have always used. The hardship basically is just the visibility from the street for the other letters, not the "at thee," that's small anyway, but the other letters, just to be able to see it from the trafficways, we felt like they needed this height of letters.
Was there any contemplation to putting "at thee" after the word "Georges"? Because if you move, if you had the two lines, then your letters would be bigger and you'd have more visibility.
We did a rendition early on with just one fish, and it was laid out a little different, but after speaking to people at the city, they wanted two fish to make it more nautical, and they actually asked us to kinda redesign it in this layout, um, back, I don't know, six months ago, three, four months ago, so that's why it kinda got, actually now has two fish, one on each side, instead of just the one that we had originally proposed. So it's kinda like working with the city, that's the design that.
Okay, I have a follow-up question, but it won't be for you.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, we're gonna open up to the public right now, if that's, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Parnas, my apologies and not see your line.
I used to fish at Two Georges when you were up in Boynton, and spent many days at the restaurant, and many days at the Cove Restaurant, and I'm kinda glad you two merged, in a sense, here in Deerfield. Next door to you, we now even have a fishing fleet, so your sign with the two sailfish are very apropos, and. are very apropos, and will help everybody. I will be voting for your variance.
Thank you.
Ma'am, if you don't mind stepping aside, we're going to open it up. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone coming forward, we're going to close it to the public. Commission, further commission comments on this? Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I, I think technically, they could have Two Georges at the Cove Restaurant, two lines, but aesthetically, this is much more pleasing. So the hardship in my mind is, I'd have a hardship looking at a not-as-good sign compared to this one, so this is better. It also brings back the Cove Restaurant name, and it's balanced, and this is a winner, and I'm glad they presented it, and I believe it should pass.
Commissioner Drosky?
Uh, yes, I've since found out that the recommendation came from C A B for the Two, the Two Sailfish idea, so that's where that came from. So, if, I understand if it came from C A B, then I guess I don't have a problem with it. That's the "at thee" is day, day minimus, and I understand the reason for the, for the variance. I don't know if it's required or not, I'm not sure who the applicant is, it says it's the C S H J Properties. I did receive a campaign contribution from Steve Skaggs, whether he's related to this entity or not. I'm just going to disclose it anyway, to err on the side of caution.
And I'd like to make a motion to pass. Second?
We have a motion and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number three is an ordinance of the City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, amending the capital improvement element of the city's adopted comprehensive plan by revising and updating the five-year schedule of capital improvement. Public here.
Staff comment?
The presentation you made the last time.
Okay. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone from the public coming forward, we're going to close it to the public. Commission comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
The public comment portion, oh, excuse me, I have a note here that we should, well, uh...
Four.
Yeah, I blew it already. I was supposed to comply to...
That's all right. I remember my first day, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Ms. Miller, let us, we want to hear four, number four with the number 12.
Four with number 12, that's exactly right. Thank you, I knew I was missing something. Four and 12 are related items, so if we can hear them together, and I think Eric can comment on both at the same time. The first one is an ordinance, City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach, creating ninety, section 98 dash 36, Planning and Development Services related fees, to authorize the city to amend the fee schedule for redevelopment, for development review application, and other planning-related fees by resolution. Then 12 is that resolution, so we would ask that you hear that, my answer. But this is a public hearing. And I think the presentation was made at the last.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Gans. If it would please the City Commission, I would like to have Mr. Power do a brief presentation for the benefit of the City Commission, as well as the general public.
Yes, that's right.
Thanks.
Commission, sorry about that.
Thank you, Eric Power, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, in our ongoing improvements to the land development code, one of the things that we requested changed, actually in, in October, when we did the development plan review and the addition of the public notice comments, was to also amend the fee schedule for planning services. A couple of things we've done is, of course, as always, we compare ourselves with like in adjacent municipalities to determine where we stand among them, to see if, you know, we're above or below. In, in most cases, actually, it looked as if the development review fees for the planning department of City of Deerfield Beach was well below the median, the mean of, of other municipalities in Broward County. We also looked at, again, any proposed fee changes. We are making a request to increase the development review fees where they are appropriate. We are making some changes to that. We have introduced a new fee for third submittal, essentially after the third review. If you are still in the process of review, there will be additional fee that's going to be paid. We feel that's fair and appropriate due to the amount of re-reviews that some applicants have. We're also providing for a minimum hourly time to basically cover costs for anything that falls outside of the range of the fee schedule. And we are introducing $100 application fee for certificate of use, which we previously discussed when we made that code change for properties that will no longer receive the inspection, which is a $400 fee. So the properties who no longer receive the inspection are still being reviewed, and still are taking staff time, so for that reason, we're asking for a $100 fee for those particular applications. We have introduced the public notice fees, so essentially, we talked at the last meeting about public notice fees, that the, the city incurs those costs at the moment for mailings and labels, for advertising the newspaper. We would like to transfer those fees onto the applicants, just to save money for the city. And essentially, what that entails is our proposal is a $2 per label. So a label essentially is just the sticky gum that goes on to the actual envelope. If, you know, there's 10, 10 people we're notifying, that's $20, essentially, to make it as simple as possible. And then, whatever the newspaper costs, it essentially would be what we call cost recovery, because we don't always know at the time of the applicant fee, how much that paper ad is going to cost, you know, what day of the week it's running, the size, things of that nature. So essentially, what we'll be doing is requiring the applicants to submit into our cost recovery account, they'll pay the difference, and then, but it won't be at the, the moment of the application. And then, we're also doing cleanup. So you were provided a, a strike-through underlying section of the fee schedule, along with a clean section of the fee schedule, we decided that it would make more sense that the fee schedule was alphabetical, and there were some other things that just needed to be, some basic cleanup, there was some duplication, things of that nature. And so, that was the extent of that. And we also added for additional fees that we have introduced over the past year, but what currently on our fee schedule, such as vacation, rental, certificate of use, and things of that nature. Toe signs was another one. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any commission questions? Vice Mayor Miller, or, excuse me, Commissioner Miller?
Are we going to be voting on them separately?
Yeah, the ordinance is, the first is the ordinance that gives you the authority to adopt the fees by resolution.
And then, can we pick up 12 right after that?
Yes, that would be right, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Not seeing anyone coming forward, thank you, Mr. Power. Anyone from the public here to comment on item four and 12? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close it to the public. Commission comments?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Four.
We have a motion and a second for item number four, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes. Item number 12?
Do we need to hear from the public first?
No, they were giving the...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve number 12 also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from the Vice Mayor, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next section is public comments. No comments shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which could offend persons of ordinary sensibility shall be permitted. Public shall be given the opportunity to speak on any item that is not on the agenda.
Chris, I'm sorry, Ms. Massey, we have somebody that's already signed up, we have you next. Chris McDonald?
Good evening. My name's Chris McDonald, I live at 739 Southeast 10th Avenue. I'm here regarding the construction taking place at 804 Southeast 10th Avenue, which I consider to be in violation of city code. Personally, I made six phone calls to code compliance before the construction had even begun on this parking lot that is described as a driveway. I came to City Hall after six calls and not having any responses. I went to code compliance, there was no one there to answer any questions, they steered me to the planning department. I met with Ms. Jacobson there, and she provided me with the code sections applicable to driveways, and specifically, section 98 dash 88. Contrary to the directives conveyed to me by Ms. Jacobson, the city approved a permit to construct a rectangular parking lot at 804 Southeast 10th Avenue, as described as a driveway. Since the city enacted the current code, the city has never approved anything other than a circular driveway in District One of the city, as shown in section 98 dash 88. The illustration that is part of the code requires a secondary landscape area in addition to it being a circular driveway. Despite my repeated requests, oral and written, the city has never provided me with proof of any other construction similar to that of 804 Southeast 10th Avenue within District One since the institution of the current city code. Without proof of the existence of other properties similar to the monstrosity on my street, I must assume that the city is reinterpreting the city code without notice or the consent of the citizen taxpayers, which is unlawful. Variances of city code require notice to landowners within a certain area around the subject location, and an opportunity for the public to be heard. I've spent considerable time trying to prevent the city from getting involved in taxpayer-funded litigation. My neighborhood does not need to be changed, it's beautiful the way it is. The city should admit that they granted a permit that is not in compliance with the law, and resolve with the owner how to remove concrete and create a circular driveway, consistent with my entire neighborhood. I also find it hard to believe that the city landscape architect approved a plan after the owner had unlawfully and surreptitiously, under cover of darkness, cut down protected gumbo limbo trees and all grass and landscaping without a permit in violation of code section 14 dash 106B. Allowing this type of construction will adversely affect the property values for all the neighboring properties and expose the city to potential liability. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That is, that was 804 Southeast 10th Avenue, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Massey?
Rita Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. I wish to commend the city for the most beautiful display Saturday that they had for the citizens. I know Rebecca and Chris and Kara must have worked very, very hard on it, and everybody loved it. Thank you very much, you are to be commended.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Richard Rosenzweig, 97, Farnham East, Deerfield Beach. I just want to thank BSO and Code and Compliance Enforcement, illegal contractors in the county. There are no current laws available on the books to enforce these kinds of laws, they're out scofflaws, man, all the time. And we had a very successful program, and want to thank Chief Schnackenberg, I'm sure is part of that program, for bringing these people in. And it was on Channel Six, by the way, and showing the contractors being pulled in. There were several trucks that were not lettered properly, there were several contractors with not licenses that were caught at the time, and cited, had to get little fines, whatever they do to them to make them comply. But this is an ongoing problem, and it's one which I hope to continue, not only with this, but other things. But we need to find some way to work within the county, within the state, to get proper laws in place to be able to make these people really pay a fine seriously, or have property removed from them in violation of what they're doing, and creating a lot of havoc. You may or may not realize, but if a contractor gets away with this, and the person that actually brings them in takes care of the permit themselves, they're personally responsible for the work that the, that the contractor did. And if it's illegally done and not proper, they're made to pull it all out and redo it with a licensed contractor, a great expense to them. And so, this is something that is really serious, has been ongoing in the one century village for quite a while. It's been working on the last four or five years and having real success, but I hope to make something stick and take it further, to really make something happen here, because the whole county is affected by this, not just Century Village, not just Deerfield. This is an ongoing problem, that long as they're able to get away with it, they'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Peggy Ross, 103 Northeast 19th Avenue. I would like to also say how wonderful the Christmas lights at the beach were, and I would like to expand that to Sullivan Park. The lights in Sullivan Park are absolutely beautiful, if anybody hasn't gone down there, it's, it's very pretty, and the people are coming, and they look at the lights and watch the boats, and, so I want to thank you on all of that. I do have a question. When you say you're power washing the pavers at the beach, it does not seem to include the S curve. Those, those are pretty dirty, and that's a lot of traffic through there, so I guess I was hoping that that could be included more in the cleaning of the pavers. And I was also wondering what was happening with the visitor's center down at the pier. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Heinz, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. Last month, I made an offer to Commissioner Miller that if he produced some documents that he had, he had mentioned, I'd, would give him $500 to his, church of his choice. I haven't received those documents yet, and I'd like to rescind that offer so he'd free up his time to do his Christmas shopping. I just received, it looked like it was posted this afternoon, the monthly report that ended September of this year, which gave a total physical status of the city for the entire year. And I'd like you to, if you get a chance, look at page 49, that is where they give the total of the general fund. Now, you know, I mentioned a bunch of times about the monthly reports, and the lack of information being given to the different commissioners, and I know for a fact several different commissioners didn't get it, I don't know how many didn't get it, but I know some didn't get it, and I'm, would, kind of curious why they didn't get it, because I think when a commissioner becomes an elected official of this city, they probably should go through some type of indoctrination, and you have been given a heads-up to look for certain documents, you're expected to receive certain documents, read them, and so, and stay formed on them. I think that's probably part of your duties. But anyway, due to, now, last month, we had this budget rolled back of about a little $130,000 or something like that. And, and this, on this page 49 of this current document, that was through September 30th, total 100% of the year, we have 6.538 million dollars in excess unencumbered funds on, on the, on the general fund. 6.538 million. And that's sort of typical, there's always an excess every year, and sometimes it's nine million, sometimes it's almost two million, but it's, it's in the millions, and I don't know why we haven't been getting our taxes rolled back to a negative amount every year, because the monies just keep piling in. And it's, and of course, I can understand that if you want to cry poor and pass a stormwater tax, if you withhold this information from folks, you can sell that argument, because people don't have those numbers and know these excesses are being run, and, and so, that's not fair if it is being withheld, and I know it's being withheld, and it shouldn't be withheld, and, and you all should be covering the citizens' backs, and I don't feel like you're, you're doing us, you know, doing us right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to commend the city, and especially the Parks and Recreation Department, for a wonderful event last Saturday night for the lighting of Ocean Way and the pier. The entertainment was top-notch, and it definitely got me in the holiday spirit. Speaking of holidays, a happy Hanukkah to Commissioner Parnas and Commissioner Rosenzweig, if he's still in the audience, and to all my other Jewish friends. And since this is the last commission meeting of the year, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone. Tonight, I actually need the help of all four commissioners and the mayor. All of you have run for office in Deerfield Beach and have won. In your preparation prior to the election, did you all have the opportunity to meet with the department heads of the city, to better prepare yourselves for all the things a commissioner is expected to know? The reasons, the reason I ask is, at the beginning of... The reason I ask is, at the beginning of November, Assistant City Manager Kara Petty called and informed me that Michael Hudak had requested a tour of the Center for Active Aging and a meeting with the head of that department, Donna DeFranzo. And would I like the same access? Of course, I jumped at the chance. I then, on November 19th, made a request to the Assistant City Manager to meet with seven other department heads to again become a better-prepared candidate and hopefully a better-prepared commissioner. Numerous emails to the office of the city manager went unanswered, other than a one-line response on November 20th, that the city manager's office will be in touch with you to discuss this request. Then, in response to still another follow-up email sent just this morning, I received the following email today at 1:48 PM from Heather Montemayor. And I will read it. "Good afternoon, all. The office of the city clerk would like to notify each of you about the new candidate orientation. After the qualifying period for the District 1 and 2 positions for the city commission, a group orientation will occur for all qualified candidates to attend. The office of the city clerk will coordinate the date and time of the orientation after the qualifying period has concluded." Now, is this orientation supposed to take the place of my request to meet with the department heads? And if so, why were Mr. Hudak and I allowed to meet with the department head of the Center for Active Aging? This is all very unclear to me. So that is why I am again asking for help from the commissioners and the mayor. May I have one last minute?
Sure.
So that is why I am again asking for help from the commissioners and the mayor to see what your experiences were and who the city manager let you meet with.
Watch your stuff. Anyone else? No? I'm going to close it to the public, then. Couple things to address some of the issues. First off, thank you very much. The staff did an outstanding job with our holiday lighting at the beach. They really did. Great job that they did there, as well as BSO, our cert volunteers, and everyone else that participated in it. Greatly appreciate it. The issue, and I brought this up on Zillow, and I'm trying to get a, trying to take a look at this, but if we could have staff meet with Mr. McDonald here, I'd like to get some clarification even for myself that if six calls come in, that we don't have a response, that's an issue. And looking at this, I'm surprised that a, and I'm not sure exactly what he's talking about as far as what this must look like, but I would even be hard-pressed, based on this photo, to understand how a circular driveway could make that if they wiped out that tree that's in the center there looking at. I'm trying to look at the photo and understand what you were talking about. So, I'm sorry, I'm not looking for a response. I'm just trying to let you know and respond to you. But we'll have staff get with you tonight, get some clarification because I would like some clarification on it as well. And as far as the pressure cleaning on the S-curve?
Certainly. Usually we schedule the pressure washing throughout the city, so I'm sure it's on the schedule. I just don't know for the S-curve what it is, what the date is for that.
Okay.
Certainly check that and get back to you.
And the question regarding the visitor's center?
Not received enough volunteers yet to begin opening the visitor's center.
Okay. And as far as Mr. Hirsch's concerns with the, I can just tell you what my experience was. I didn't get to meet with any of the department's heads. Wasn't allowed. That was, that was a long time ago, though. But that's the way it was then. Didn't get a chance to. I think I may have met with the city attorney because I'd been involved for number of years and served on boards. So other than the city attorney and the then-city manager, I don't think I met with a single department head, except for the police chief, I guess you could say that. That was it. But if you want to talk about this orientation?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So we're just trying to make it as feasible and as fair to all candidates involved. And instead of having candidates come in and just meet with the city manager or the city attorney, which has been the norm, I know that Commissioner Josky came in and met with me. Vice Mayor at the time, candidate, or Commissioner Battle, also met with me. And I've certainly had other commissioners and those running for mayor meet with me. And I can't speak for the city attorney's office, but they certainly come in and met with me. What the orientation will do, it will expose them to just not the city attorney's office or to the city manager's office, but each department will do an overview of what they do, and then we'll do a tour. But the purpose is, is that all candidates that qualify for District 1 and 2 will get the exact same exposure, the exact same presentations and tour as anyone else. And unfortunately, dealing with the Center for Active Aging, that was a mistake that was made by a director. And Ms. Petty has addressed that, and that will not happen again because this was discussed with the city attorney's office to come up with something that would be fair and equitable for anyone running for office. And this is something that I hope continues well into the future. And the other thing that we're also going to do is, after the election, have an orientation for the new District 1 and District 2 commissioners. And then in 2021, it would be for the mayor, District 3 and District 4 commissioners. So I think this is actually the best way to handle it, and everyone gets the same access. Does that answer your?
All right.
And I think the only other item was regarding the general fund. Let me roll over. I don't think there was a question, it was more a statement. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Item 5 is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach appointing Daniel Fraser to the Board of Trustees Firefighter Pension Trust Fund.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second from Vice Mayor Battle. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Josky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item 6, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach reappointing David Reynolds as Commissioner of the Deerfield Beach Housing Authority. The mayor makes the appointment subject to the approval of the board.
And I do ask for your support on this, obviously. I wouldn't bring it forward if I didn't. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Commissioner Parnas?
I move that.
I'm going to close it to the public before you. If that's okay. Oh, did I? I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Josky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving Amendment 002 to the Older Americans Act contract agreement with the Area Wide Council on Aging Inc. for the Center for Active Aging services in the amount not to exceed $190,476.71.
Commission comments? Staff?
This is the annual contract that the city commission usually enters into because it's money or funding that comes into the Center for Active Aging. And it's been properly vetted by staff and the office of the city attorney. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes, just real quick, Mr. Hanson, does this help us to make up the shortfall that we were anticipating at the beginning of the year because of the loss of funding?
No, we're completely, the budget is balanced for Center for Active Aging, so this was already included in it, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward, I'm going to close it to the public.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Josky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Next item is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving Amendment 002 to the Older Americans Act contract agreement with the Area Wide Council on Agency, amount not to exceed $588,752.32.
Yes, again, this is another annual agreement, and in this case, this is an amendment, second amendment, for approximately $32,000, a little over $32,500, which increased it to the $588,000. Staff has reviewed this as well as the city attorney, and there are no issues.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Not hearing any. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Jumping ahead on that. Appreciate that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I do, I'm going to close it to the public. Thank you. And we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Josky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item 9, a resolution of the City Commission approving the program year 2017, 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Housing and Community Development Programs.
Staff want to make a presentation or comment on this?
Yes, I can have Ms. Placid Picard just give a brief summary, if it would please the city commission.
Are we all right with that? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. What you have before you is the annual evaluation report for the CDBD grant. Every year, we do an annual action plan that tells you what projects we'll be proposing to complete within that year. And then at the end of the year, we let you know what our expenditures were and what the outcomes were for the projects that were done. So you'll see in the report that we completed home repair projects, purchase assistance projects. We also do work with the Center for Active Aging for senior transportation, as well as completed the playground at Johnny McKeithen Park, and also sidewalks, which we worked with Environmental Services. A new sidewalk was added along Natura Boulevard just south of Hills Bar. It's a quick synopsis.
Thank you. Any commission comments before I open it to the public? Not seeing any? Thank you, Ms. Picard. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Close it to the public, commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Josky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item 10, a resolution, City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach accepting the investment policy and internal control certification from the city's chief financial officer.
City manager?
Yes, if you'd like, I can have the chief financial officer give a brief presentation.
Please.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gans, Vice Mayor Battle, Commissioners. The item before you essentially presents the city's investment position as of September 30th year-end. And essentially, what the certification speaks to is the fact that we have not gone outside of the bounds of the permissible investments. The percentage concentration of our total portfolio stayed within the parameters as indicated by our investment policy, which was updated in March of this year. In terms of the overall portfolio, the city pretty much, as was indicated in the previous meeting, we have essentially two main investment portfolios, sub-portfolios, one of which is with what's called a Florida Prime, and that's formerly the State Board of Administration, which the FRS or the Florida Pension Fund holds most of its money in. It's an intergovernmental pool, and it is managed by the State Board of Administration. In terms of our other sub-investment portfolio, that is managed by Wells Fargo Asset Management, and that managed portfolio totaled $52 million roughly at the end of the fiscal year. But aside from that, this item essentially is just reflecting our investment portfolio and the fact that staff has obtained the necessary continuing professional education as required by the investment policy. I'm pretty much hoping for any questions that you might have.
Just one briefly. The title of this resolution is a resolution, blah, blah, accepting the investment policy and internal control certification. I understand the certification because that's all in my backup, and I read that, but what investment policy am I being asked to accept?
The investment policy and internal control certification, that's indicating that the policy was adhered to and the fact that we did not go outside of the permissible bounds.
Yeah, this is not a new policy.
It's not a new policy.
Maybe it's just, it might have been a commerce. They're accepting the certification that they complied with the investment policy that is already existing.
Okay. I didn't read it.
Yeah, I can see where you could read it. I was looking at it. As I was reading the title, I.
Commissioner Josky, just for the sake of benefit of the elected officials as well as the audience, the state, if my mind reads me correctly, Section 218 of the Florida statutes has specific requirements for state and local government investments, one of which is that we have to follow a written investment policy. And our policy, as well as the state statute, specifically requires staff to have a set amount of continuing professional education. What it also requires is that we maintain an investment portfolio that's within certain parameters. And essentially, what the certification is purporting is that we have stayed within those boundaries.
I understand that part.
Yeah, no, the title, I could have done a better job with it.
Precisely. Understood. Understood.
Thank you.
Likewise. Thanks.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this item?
Joe Hines, 559 Northwest 47th Terrace. When I look at the three totals, they add up to $63 million. And I was just wondering, is that, all that money, or is any of that money encumbered of any fashion? In other words, if I was to go to the bank and withdraw, let's just set it on the floor right here, could I spend it on a Learjet or something? Would it be free money that I could use for something else? Or is it attached? Is it assigned to anything, or is it just city savings, pure and simple? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I just, a super quick question, just to state publicly for the record. Who is the investment advisor that the city uses to help with our investment decisions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to close it to the public. Can we get some answers to those questions? In other words, I think one was, can we buy a Learjet with the $63 million? Or such?
With respect to the Learjet, I didn't know if it meant supersonic or any other fashion, but for the sake of seriousness, the $63 million represent a conglomeration of all of the city's, we could say, for the sake of simplicity, fund balance, which is broken up into restricted balance, which is broken up into restricted and unrestricted. For the sake of further simplicity, the city's enterprise funds, the greatest of which is the utility fund, perhaps comprise about forty million dollars of that. The general fund makes up an additional twenty or so million. So coupled together, that's around sixty. The remaining three, we have other restricted funds, which are third-party or donor-imposed restriction, for which the city have kept those funds in-- segregated in a manner. But we do pool all of our investments so that we can generate the greatest amount of investment return. So to answer the gentleman's question, it is not funds set aside to purchase a Learjet. In the city's financial statements, there is a page that's called the Statement of Net Position, formerly called the Balance Sheet. What the Balance Sheet is reflecting are the total assets, which includes investments, cash, receivables, and all of the claims against those assets, which are how much debt we owe. And then the sub-difference between those two amounts is what we would consider fund balance or savings. But the sixty-three million dollars is not for the general fund. Just to clear the ear, that's not all of the general fund. It's a conglomeration of all of the city's funds, including our enterprise funds, the water and sewer, these solid waste funds, as well as all of the donor-imposed or third-party restricted funds.
So in other words, some of it absolutely is tied and others might not be as specific?
Exactly.
Is that about right?
Restricted and unrestricted funds.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of the, who specifically is over the city's managed portfolio, it's Wells Fargo Advisors, and they gave a presentation in the last meeting. And they've been our advisors for quite some time and we're very pleased with their performance over the years.
Excellent. So and again, the point of this is just for certification of compliance with their own policy?
It is.
Excellent. Thank you. Commission?
We done with the public?
You're gonna close it to the public. I don't see anybody else coming up, so yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All, roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Okay, now we're on item eight, wait, excuse me, eleven. Ordinance, City Commission of Deerfield Beach, amending section 66 at 56 prohibitions relative to stopping, standing, or parking in specific spaces of the city code to prohibit parking in locations that block access to or from a public or private driveway. Kind of self-explanatory by the title, what purpose of it is. That's the limited purpose of this ordinance.
Any staff comments before we move forward?
Yes, Mr. Power would like to make a brief comment.
Sure.
Thank you.
I tried really hard to figure out the best way to explain this graphically, so I created a small animation. Essentially, a vehicle is supposed to park in a, on the swale, or in the road is permitted, provided that it does not block a public or private driveway. So these would be the two scenarios in which this code further indicates that it would not be permitted because the vehicle is either partially blocking an adjacent driveway or is parked directly, sorry, adjacent to, and therefore, a vehicle can't get in and out. So we wanted to strengthen this language, to strengthen this code, to help when it comes to issuing citations.
Interesting. Okay. If you don't mind keeping that graphic up there, appreciate it. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone coming forward. We'll close it to the public. Having lived here for a long time, I can tell you the parking in the street, parking in the swale issue has been a great debate for, as long as I've been here, for twenty, over almost twenty-five years now. Whether it's an HOA or private citizens have always complained about whether you're allowed to park in the street or you're not allowed to park in the street. This tells you you are, but under circumc-- certain circumstances. So you can park in the swale, that's not an issue, right? Just for clarification. So in this particular case, the yellow car, if it was parked in the swale, wouldn't it be a problem, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But because it's parked in the road and it's immediately across from a driveway trying to back out, that's considered against code?
Correct.
Okay. And the other one, obviously, is pretty straightforward. If you're blocking a driveway, you're blocking a driveway. Okay. Commission? Is this universal across the city now? Or is this only in certain sections?
Well, this, no, this would be for the entire city. I do want to point out, there are code sections, there are multiple swales throughout the city that by definition of code, they're addressed, are prohibited for parking in. For example, pretty much every swale on the barrier island. You know, there are certain swales we're not allowed to park. But in general, typical residential housing, you're allowed to park on the swale or on the road. There are no prohibitions against that.
Okay. There are areas that are in the southern portion, southern and central portion of the city, that in the past, now, let's say, ten years ago, had issues with the people parked in the street just because of the side, because it was the unincorporated area in which we had, the Tetter area. They used to have issues with if somebody parked in the street and every house was parking in the street, essentially vehicles, garbage trucks, nothing could get by. Does that apply there also?
Yeah. This particular code section actually already discusses the widths that a vehicle must get through for life safety. So for a fire truck, for example. And another quick example, the Toll Brothers property we just approved, the townhomes we just approved. You know, we made that a condition of the development agreement, that parking would only be permitted on one side of the right-of-way so the access could be given. So in situations where you've had control over it, you know, we try to make this an item for--
Okay.
--for regulation.
Excellent. Thank you. Vice Mayor Battle and Commissioner Miller?
I think you partially answered my question, Mr. Power, because in District Two, there are cars who just, they park on the street and they stay. How long do we have to wait then before code or somebody does something about it? According to this ordinance, is it something that the citizen just can call in?
Well, we would regulate inoperable vehicles by the definition of code.
They're not inoperable. That's just their place to park because they have so many other cars.
Right. So in situations where you are legally permitted to park in a swale or a public right-of-way, there isn't much we can do about that. But there are some things we can do about the integrity of the swale. If the sod is deteriorating, if it's, you know, continuing with drainage and things of that nature. So there are citations that would occur for people who park on the swale so routinely that it degrades the swale, because of course, we use that for drainage. I'm not sure about any particular situation for vehicles. I'd have to talk to code compliance about that.
Yeah, we need to look into that because I tell you, if you have a house that has five drivers and your driveway can only, you know, help out four of those, then where's that fifth car allowed to park? Is it indefinitely on the streets or is that something? I mean, they move it every day and I guess you can look at it like they do in DC. If you move it by a certain time period, then you're okay. But it's something that we need to look at.
Yes, Scott, city manager.
Yes. Vice Mayor will certainly follow up with you on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Miller?
I had a, the rare times when someone might have a party at their house and a number of people, some people might be parked in the street. And it was your driveway and during the course of the party, one of your guests parked in front of the other cars that were in the driveway. It wouldn't be a bother to you because they were your guests. But I mean, I imagine with this ordinance, there's no exceptions to the rule, you know, even in the case of maybe you have a party or something at your house?
This is a citation process that could be issued either by a BSO officer or code compliance officer. I would hope and imagine that either of them would use discretion as to the intention of the vehicle.
Okay. There's some discretion. Yeah, okay. That's, I get the spirit.
All right. Commissioner Drosky?
Yeah, I certainly have this issue in my district and I'm in favor of it. The question that I have is where in the backup that shows that this is a citation process? I see the underline, what we're adding to the ordinance. Is there subsections below this that aren't in the backup that show it's part of the citation process? Because I don't want to have to, you know, add, you know, remember how we had to add the enforcement to the bridge, to the Hillsborough Bridge to prevent, you know, bike?
No, it's currently within the power of a BSO officer or code compliance officer to issue a citation under this code section.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Commission?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Parnas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
A2 is a resolution of the City Commission of Deerfield Beach approving the settlement of claims against the city in the litigation style. Maria Españo versus City of Deerfield Beach Aquatic Center, Rosa Calderon versus City of Deerfield Beach at Al, Jose Cepeda versus City of Deerfield Beach at Al. You've had shade meetings on this. It's a very sensitive subject, the settlement. We think it's a good one, especially considering the circumstances and the subject matter, and is consistent with the discussions had at the shade meeting. So we're recommending approval of the settlement.
Okay. We'll open this to the public. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. And my questions have nothing to do with the case itself. It's more of the accounting. I guess the, I'll address these to the city attorney, but maybe better for the financial people, so you'll let me know. First of all, what were the city's approximate legal costs to settle these three cases? And my second question is, what financial line item are these monies taken from? And do we budget for settlements? And if so, how much do we budget for settlements? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? We'll close it to the rest of the public. Staff, you want to address that?
I do, I do not know the amount of, but that's certainly something that could easily be provided you. Yes, I--
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Dunkley come up.
I don't know if he even--
Yeah.
You don't know off the top of your head, do you? Yeah, he doesn't know. I wouldn't think he would. We'll find that out.
As far as the line item, which this comes from, and do we budget for this type of thing?
We have a self-insurance fund, do you not?
Mayor, it comes out of the risk management budget, self-insurance fund.
Okay. Thank you. Commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item A3 is the first reading of an ordinance, City Commission of Deerfield Beach, amending code section 6679, cost of parking stickers to decrease the cost of parking stickers to seventy-five dollars.
And first, I'm gonna apologize to everyone. I had this brought forward. It's very late in the game and I apologize for it because I know that our beach, residential beach parking stickers have just gone on sale. I should have had it together before the last meeting. I did not, and then it snuck up on me for this one to get it in. So my apologies. And the reason I wanted to do it is because since we, they've only been on sale for a couple of days now. And if we move forward with this, which I think is the right thing to do, if we move forward with this, I want us to be able to, you know, have as much, have as little paperwork as possible when it comes to refunding money to people who've already purchased it. So that's why I've kind of requested this be discussed tonight, at least get first reading in. That way, we can have a second reading in January to have it approved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in, having spoken with several residents and going down the beach and knowing just how popular our beach is, you know, this is something that, there was a time period not that long ago in which people were trying to get, we had the former mayor that was looking to eradicate beach residential parking stickers entirely. And we fought against that, fought to keep it. And I know we raised it at one point, and it's been a little while that we raised it. But looking at it and looking at it where our current parking rates are, I felt we could, we could do the residents better than what we're doing with the hundred dollars. To go down to seventy-five dollars, just to give you an idea, so let's say that our meters, and we'll go at the cheapest rate, which is two dollars an hour, you go down the beach, it's four hours, let's say you're going down the beach for. So that's eight dollars. And you times that once a month, and you do that, that's ninety-six dollars. Everyone following me, my math okay on that? Everybody makes sense? So right now, that kind of justifies the hundred dollar mark. But I think of talking to enough people and realizing just how popular our beach is, if we go down to seventy-five, even if people don't go once a month, let's say they only go like nine visits, that it pays for itself. So I think it's the right thing to do, and I'd like to see us do that and residents can look at it as a, something for the holidays for them.
The, this is the first reading. The public hearing will be held at the second reading in January.
Commission? Commissioner Parnas and then Commissioner Drosky?
I will vote for the reduction. I think the beach is a great attraction for, half of South Florida love our beach, and I think our residents should get a break. We live here all year round, and I will support this motion.
Commissioner Drosky?
Pardon me. I will support it too. I want to just go back to the last item real quick because it was an add-on and everyone knows how I feel about add-ons. I think due to the sensitive nature of that case, to wait six weeks to approve that settlement would have been unreasonable, if not probably imprudent to do so. That needs to be resolved right away. So I was okay with that being an add-on. I'm okay with this being an add-on as well because the beach stickers started going on sale December 1st for 2019, actually. So there's sales already going on. My conversations with staff before this meeting, we've sold a couple hundred already in the first four days. So that's only going to multiply as time goes on. So for this to wait to January 15th as well, I mean, that list of stickers being sold would grow exponentially. My comment is, is for the city manager and his staff to please, please identify a refund process as soon as possible, to identify those that have already paid so that those can be reimbursed their twenty-five dollars. And then obviously, going forward, just, we have good record-keeping of those who have paid and those who will pay going forward so we can keep track of this. Because the last thing I want is someone coming in saying, you know, I've paid a hundred dollars, you know, now it's seventy-five, why didn't I get my twenty-five dollars back? I'd like to be proactive and identify that now, then have people come storm the commission chambers later.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky. City manager?
Yep. Just to answer Commissioner Drosky's question, yes, we actually have a database when we register any of the beach stickers so we can easily refund them, whether it was paid for with a credit card, cash, or check. So, and we'll certainly start working on the logistics of that. We already have, actually.
I paid cash, by the way.
One of the issues with it is this, is the reality is, we simply don't have enough spaces in which we can completely, you know, from a city standpoint, be able to completely give up that revenue that we have to help cover for our expenses down there. So we don't have enough spaces to really meet the demand. The demand is always tremendous and it's, you know, it's something our, I've always felt that our residents deserve, but it's, since we don't have the ability to do that, and if we put it too low, you're gonna have a gold rush in which you're gonna have a lot of people buying stickers and they're gonna be really unhappy because there's not enough to go around. They're still gonna be unhappy with it. They're unhappy at the hundred dollar rate, the way it is. But I think seventy-five is very reasonable and it pays for itself. But I think 75 is very reasonable, and it pays for itself, and, you know, if you infrequently go to the beach, it still pays for itself, so I think it's a good thing. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I just want a clarification. My understanding is if you own an apartment in Central Village, even if your primary residence is in Canada, you could still purchase this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so residents mean you have real estate in the city, not a full-time resident?
Having residence in the city.
Oh, you could be a renter too, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not just full-time residents, okay. Yeah, I'm for this, I'd like to make a motion. Do we have to go to public?
The public hearing is going to be on January 1st.
All right, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Battle?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes, thank you very much, everyone. Administration illegal?
I actually have one item, Mayor. At the last meeting, we adopted Resolution 2018-182, which was required by the Florida Department of Transportation, dealing with the sign, the community aesthetic feature agreement with FDOT for signage. FDOT has now changed the name, it's the exact same agreement, everything is exactly the same, but they insist that the resolution refer to a permit, and it's a guide sign permit, and that the resolution reflect that new name. So I'm asking if the commission could by motion approve an amended 2018-182, substituting a guide sign permit for community aesthetic feature agreement.
It's going to be open to the public?
It is an action by you, and again, this was, I will point out that FDOT provided us with the form agreements that they wanted us to adopt, which is what we did.
They changed the rules?
After we adopted, they indicated that they changed the name. And they wanted the new name. So we're going to follow their...
Is there anyone from the public that would care to comment on this, this minor name change? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close it to the public.
I'd like to make a motion to make the name change, as FDOT wants us to, for these signs, as soon as possible. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from the Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Anything else? City Manager?
Yes, just quickly, just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, season's greetings, and on behalf of the staff of Deerfield Beach, we certainly look forward to 2019 and all the great accomplishments we'll make for the citizens and businesses. So, thank you.
Commission, let's see, Commission comments. District one, Commissioner Miller?
I also would like to say Happy Hanukkah, and, yeah, and Merry Christmas. I guess we won't meet before Christmas, and happy, whatever else you might be celebrating. The light display was very nice. And Mayor, I thought it was a class act that you invited the former mayor, Peggy, up onto the stage. That was very nice of you. So, otherwise, I think we're doing well, thank you.
Thank you very much. District three? Excuse me, District two, my apologies.
That's okay. Couple of things. First of all, and Ms. Vicki, I always say Ms. Vicki, classic Picard. I'm going to be sending, well, we're going to meet tomorrow, aren't we? Are we meeting tomorrow? No? Okay, I do have something for you. Mr. Mayor, the Florida League of Cities, well, the Florida League of Cities, and Broward League of Cities, and the Florida League of Mayors is having an essay contest for our local school students. And the title of the essay is, "If I Were Elected Mayor." So I would hope that we, you know, get on board with this and try to get this information to our schoolchildren. There will be three awards given. I don't know the amount of the awards, but it is something for our schoolchildren that we should be encouraging. The other thing that we need to encourage is the Broward League of Cities. I believe the scholarship application is available, and our high school students need to know that, so that they can apply for those, for that particular scholarship. From the League of Cities, then, the Fast Fly-In Event, which is the federal advocacy trip, will be held in Washington DC on February 12th through the 13th. I don't know that if anybody would be going. I know that we went off time last year and got a lot accomplished, so, you know, if we want to go, if we want to send somebody up there, it's good. In addition to that, on December 19th, and yes, we still are accepting toys and books, on December 19th, for the children ages, let me get this right, is it seven through 14? Seven through 14, the annual book and toy event for our children over at Ovita McKeaton. For the parents, you cannot get a book and/or a gift, but you will be able to eat ice cream to your heart content, okay? So please join us if you have the time and you want to spend an evening with our children at Ovita, and it will be at 7 o'clock, I believe, 7 o'clock, at Ovita McKeaton Recreation Center. And Merry Christmas, Joy, Your Noel, December 19th. Happy Hanukkah, and just have a blessed and safe holiday to all citizens, thank you.
Thank you so much. District three?
Yes, thank you. Happy Hanukkah to everybody, and Merry Christmas, and a very healthy and happy New Year. As you know, I'm a big supporter of saving Crystal Lake, representing in my district the many residents that use the lake and live around it. I would like your permission to address the Planning Council this week and let them know how we voted and how we felt about the last attempt to fill in a portion of the lake. In order for me to do that, as a commissioner, I need your approval of a majority of this board. And I'll ask for a show of hands.
What do we?
I was told that I can address the Planning Council.
On a plat?
No. No.
Filling and burn.
Filling in the Crystal Lake.
The lagoon off Sable Road.
We voted on it.
The Planning and Zoning Board.
Yes, Planning and Zoning Board.
Broward Planning Council.
Has he come before the Broward County Planning Council?
No, this is our planning board.
It's not a matter that this item should not come before the Planning Council, that's why I was very confused.
Okay, I...
I know, I'm sorry, it's my fault.
That's what I thought he said.
Okay, and I'm asking this group, my fellow commissioners and the mayor, to support me in my effort to save the lake for my constituents.
And I'm going to do something that I hate to do, I wish I'd known you were going to bring this up, and I really apologize for doing this. This plat item that's going to come before you is a quasi-judicial item. And for the commission to kind of appoint you to go before the Planning and Zoning Board to oppose it would kind of run contrary to that process. So, and I really apologize, the last thing I want to do is get in your way on this one, but I would do more harm than good if I allow the commission to go in that track, because it's going to come back to this commission as a quasi-judicial item, plat's a quasi-judicial matters, and we would provide a very good appealable issue for that applicant if we had already, before we had even heard it, appointed you as a representative to go before the Planning and Zoning Board and oppose it.
I can do so as a private citizen, though.
You can, and that's something we could probably discuss, I'd rather discuss with you privately.
Fine. I will be here after the meeting.
Is that it? Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the commission is already in the holiday spirit, because all of our votes tonight were five to zero. I keep track of that, and so...
Oh no, we're a rubber stamp.
It's been a long, a long time since we've had a meeting, if ever, five, five to zero. I too want to thank staff for a tremendous Ocean Way lighting ceremony that we had. It was fantastic, at times it was shoulder to shoulder with people. I don't know if BSO took, you know, headcounts out there, but there had to have been more people this year than last year. It was absolutely packed down there, and it was a great event. Speaking of great events, this Saturday, from 11:00 to 2:00, at the villages of Hillsborough Park is the annual Winter Wonderland. That's always a great time for kids, so please come out to that. And lastly, I too, to my colleagues, to my constituents, to the residents of Deerfield Beach, I do wish you a Happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa. And please celebrate and spend some time with your families this year, and let's get prepared and, you know, pull our heels up for 2019.
Thank you. City Mayor, correction, the Winter Wonderland, that's in Quiet Waters Park this year, is that correct?
Yes, it is in Quiet Waters.
Yeah. That's okay. It's been there for so many years, it's kind of hard to remember that it changed. I do want to say, the new mayor of Broward County, Commissioner Mark Bogan, has formed a new Broward County Mayor's Council, and he's asked me to sit on that council. And one of the great things about it is, Broward County and municipal governments don't always see eye to eye, and I can tell you, having sat up here for a long time, it's been adversarial at times. One of the things that's great about this is, we have a few newly elected officials on there who have been through this. The former mayor, Pompano Lamar Fisher, having, I'm sure Pompano's had their own share of dealing with the county, and much like former Commissioner Lamar did, you know, he would feel that pain, and sometimes this adversarial nature certainly wasn't in the best interest of all of Broward County. So I do appreciate being asked to be on there, I appreciate the effort by Mayor Bogan to do this, because I think what this is going to do is help us cut through a lot of the red tape that is out there between, and gets in our way with working together with Broward County. One of the few areas, I will say, that they do an outstanding job, and we have complete support in what I feel is also a really good relationship. In particular is the Deerfield Beach Island that we have over there off Sullivan Park. They had an event this weekend that was outstanding, the volunteers are phenomenal for that, but it's a really nice relationship between Broward County Park System and the City of Deerfield Beach, and I see that only improving. And this Broward County Mayor's Council has the potential to see that happen more often. So I'm greatly appreciative of that, and I think it's going to be a good thing for all of us, because I know that that's what he's committed to trying to do. The other thing I'd like for consideration, and like to direct staff to look into doing this, but I would like to have us look to prohibit standalone pharmacies and dispensaries and keep them only as an accessory use in the B1 zoning districts. So if we could have you look into that, maybe bring something forward?
I'll take the tuition direction just to adopt an ordinance providing for those as accessory uses in the B1 district, accessory uses only in the B1 district.
It's not a ban, obviously, but it's just to keep it as an accessory use only.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What prompted that? Has there been a complaint, or you anticipate them sprouting up all over the place?
Well, certainly, B2 and B3 aren't an issue, and I think it serves us well in there. But when it comes to B1, and to give you an idea, the beach area is B1. So imagine putting a giant CVS standalone there, or a dispensary down there in an area which doesn't exactly serve the public in the way that it probably could. I think if we do it as an accessory only, we're better off.
You know what, you explained it well, thank you.
Okay.
So we'll take that as a direction from the commission to prepare the ordinance. We will process it immediately and make sure that it gets processed, and then within the next 60 to 90 days, we can get it through quickly.
Good.
Okay, I do want to...
This will begin the zoning in progress, at this point, you've established a zoning in progress on that matter.
That makes some work.
But we will move quickly with it.
Okay, excellent, thank you. The other thing I mentioned at the start of the meeting, that we lost Father Brian Dalton from St. Ambrose Church. The ceremony today was outstanding, and it was a fantastic turnout. If there's ever a rock star in Deerfield Beach, it would be Father Dalton. Anybody next to Rita Massey, who, you know, walking along the beach, anybody, you'd probably be the only other person to be stopped more than Father Dalton when he'd walk the beach. So he will be missed, and it's a great loss for the city of Deerfield Beach, and a wonderful ceremony today. I do want to wish everyone happy holidays, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas. Please be safe out there, there are a lot of different ways to get around and travel. Use alternative routes, especially if you're going to imbibe. Be safe, and everyone have a wonderful holiday season.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
A second, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.